We're six to call, thank you. Try to leave your cap because things like that. All right, I'll call the November fifth meeting of the municipal city council to order please. Could we have a low call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watts?
Here.
Councilwoman Appleton?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott? Councilwoman Evil?
Here.
Councilwoman Patty?
Here.
Councilwoman Reese?
Here.
City Attorney Moore?
Here.
And this Scott is making her way in. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes? So, let's take it one at a time. The approval of the October first council, regular council meetings. You hear a motion about that?
Motion.
Motion to approve, yeah, second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? If not all in favor of approval?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Okay, does it approve the October eighth special call council meeting? Did you have a chance to read that? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. Second? Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor of approval?
Uh-huh.
And opposed? And then October twenty-second special call council meeting? Could I have a motion about that, please?
Motion to approve.
Any motion and second, thank you. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, I believe?
Uh-huh.
And opposed? Thank you, so those are approved. Now, when a consideration of bills over $2,000? Just another report?
Okay guys, so the first bill that we had is our plea bill. It is $2,094.27. Our next bill, if you guys have any questions, we can speak to, but it's the make sure these products that is going to go to the Board of Education. It's $4,588.82. And then place analytical was for the lab testing and it's $2,020. And I have copies of that. If you guys need to see it, but I did send them out to the attended high testing.
Motion, vote on these separately?
I have a motion to vote separately, okay? Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, you vote separately, I believe.
Uh-huh.
And opposed? So we'll take the first one?
Motion to approve the plea bill, second.
Okay, any discussion on that? See, none, the all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Okay?
Motion to approve Mr. Ed Ness?
Motion, the second there?
Second.
Second.
Second?
Can I have a little explanation of what that entails of why we have to pay to the Board of Education?
Yes, there is a, there is a law on this where there's a tax that is certainly charged on the experience of that goes to the state, the state then refunds it to the city. The cities have all in common supposed to be 50% of that to the Board of Education. And we've not been doing that. So that's the reason it's so popular at the time. Because ever since the restaurant opened its handle, nothing has really went for more education than just that. And so, we need to catch up on those, on those past years.
Okay. I mean, we think your business will better.
It's still?
Yes. Thanks for finding that.
Yes. Teresa is doing a great job of finding a lot of things here. We appreciate it. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of approval of this bill?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Okay. Place analytical?
Motion to approve place analytical, second.
Okay, any discussion?
What is it? Lab testing?
Is that, yeah. It's for, is that for water?
Yes.
Is it?
Water.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of approval?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Okay, thank you, definitely is approved. Uh, do you, this is the time that we give citizens a chance to share anything they want to share with the council. Any concerns, any, uh, any good stuff, any bad stuff you think that you have to share. Anyone at this time like to share from the citizens here in Carthage? Okay, thank you. Uh, then we'll go on to?
We haven't seen any have something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's on the agenda?
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Okay, yes. I would like to say something, sure, to the citizens, I thought you wanted to be so, it's going for you. Um, but I'd just like to say that I feel like overall, the town of Carthage and the citizens of Carthage did a good job making it happen and for the kids this year. So I just really thought it was good down at the end and worked well for all the families. And hopefully next year we can get back to normal and that we can close the street. The only thing I would like to have, could we have closed the street? But I realize that we couldn't and that I'd like to next year.
Okay, thanks, thank you. Thank you, everybody, you're right. Okay, then we go on to the different reports on the mayor's report. I just want to, uh, three things here. The Ball State classes that were, could quite go through with the fall because of some technical stuff. Uh, we'll start for sure in the spring. And there are going to be two classes on, one on Tuesday nights, one on Thursday nights at 6:00 PM. We're going to have English composition and an introductory to sociology. Starts on January nineteenth, so if you know anyone who graduated who would like to have their classes here rather than going all the way to Gallaudet. Or any folks who maybe started or an degree, so six to three didn't quite finish, they can come down with a, what's called a reconnect scholarship. So their tuition is paid on this, so it's a really wonderful chance for a lot of things to have a leg up for a little higher education here. Uh, we're having the veterans parade on November eighth at 2:00 PM, that's a Sunday. The parade goes from Carmack Avenue down Main Street to downtown, where they're addressed by Major General Tommy Baker, who gave an address there. The Christmas parade will be Sunday, November twenty-ninth at 4:30. And travels down Main Street from Industrial Drive to, to the downtown courthouse. And there will be some music and tree lighting there. That's all for right now. Okay. City Attorney Report?
I don't have a formal report, but I'd like to ask you any questions?
Questions? Okay, thank you, city reporter?
I don't have any, no, we're in the sun.
Okay, thank you. Our police chief? Chief Davis?
I don't have anything at this time.
I'm sorry, see, I'm not, it wasn't on mine, I'm sorry, Teresa, Davis?
Um, I have to tell the chief to, all members, about the COVID findings. We were thinking about a lot of the tourism dollars and spending dollars for the COVID funding. We have to use different things related to COVID. And we also have to make sure that, that all of the proper documentation is included for it to be hired. This is a listing of the things that we are, are in the process of buying and then including to buy. The items are changing, very are things that are already in purchase and have already been returning back to us. Then the items, the, on both parts are the, the next section. Are the items that we're including to go ahead and secure for residents. These are the items that we've officially received long-term. And then also, will also be very beneficial to the fire department and the police department as those kind of COVID as well. Uh, these items right here, some of these will be over the $2,000 limit. And we will be bringing them forward council to get, to get approval on this before we can process the, the, the rest of the buys. Now, we are sending in, it'll be about $43,000 worth, and we're only, only $34,000. But some of these items are related things like I need to, you know, for a year. So this way we can't have any, any appropriate alcohol or COVID need. Um, there is some funds that may fall in fully repair. So it's already in the budget, so if please do not wish, please lend us part of that. We do already have money in the budget to cover the bottom of the bill. Um, and we are still going to have a budget in the quarter of $34,000, $170. So this is just, let you all know the kind of, we're at. Um, they also did say that if all the funds did not get used, there may be another reallocation of additional funds. So they suggested that if you can, if you wanted to submit that part of this, the one that, because it is additional, let's do it for the table. We could, we already got something out there for it, we say no question of that as well. And so they did say that possibly the police page could be used in that as well. So we've only submitted something for that, a lot of our problems will have not get that. So we're going to make sure that if we can, we'll do that.
So you're saying we can, we can use the central, we are getting here, we can use that out of code funding because we're meeting any reason, so we reallocate it?
Yes, that is, that is, that is the hope of the plan. I have run this by, I didn't get our contract for this. And he said that, yes, that's a good or a very strong case for that. Because we are having to be, be still, we can call it up again. Because if not, we would be, they are seen hot.
Now, is this reimbursed revenue from the state? Like, once we do it, they'll reimburse us the revenue and that'll show up on our revenues?
So we, we're just temporarily paying for it, um, until they, you know, refund us back and prove it. But like I said, that we are going over our lot and just moving it. But there is some of these funds that are available in the budget for the, for the city buildings. So that's why I just wanted to go over, we can all on the COVID meeting. And Gina, um, I'll say there is, there is something else that I've been working on. As I've been reading through the numbers and working with our auditor. Um, there's the funds that may need to go from general fund over to more super fund. And so I've worked on with our auditor and also been contacted about that. And letters from that, and I will send it and then call the, call the office. And they work with the place to deal and explain it, give the preparation for me and that's how we do this deal happen. And as I do give the preparation, I will bring it to you on this one.
Thank you. Okay, um, something works, less there.
Wow.
Water and sewers?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Water plant, Rustic?
Everything's running smooth, I have no formal report, but if you have any questions, anybody, if you have any answers.
Okay, Steve, with water plant?
I've got a couple of things, I'll get you a phone. Turn of farm, we've been trying to go file and replace them, not for two years. We finally got the file replaced down there. Uh, I think less than very correct tomorrow, somewhere that will occur. Only thing left, a big change in the electricity. From, uh, being put in the trench, be sure that it's a bit electrical thing. So we're probably ninety percent done with that. Uh, electric bill, you know, I'm dealing with time to cut it, uh, for October. Our bill was over $1,000 less this year than last year. So it's a good thing. Other than that, I just want to personally thank Councilwoman Scott and Councilman Watts for the service. And for always, every time I needed anything, they were on board and they helped us for minutes, they were also a man and I appreciate it. No questions? That's all.
Thank you, very nice. Chief Ty, with the fire department?
Don't have a formal report for the national fire incident recording system. Has been down since October seventh. Nothing of any data. And hopefully that's going to resolve in the next few days. They're, they're changing out, they couldn't even place your own system. And they run into issues, they're involved running issues. So no formal report tonight, we're going to run it, we're on it.
Thank you very much. Uh, then we have some grant reports. We have Allison Bonson, UCDD, who's going to talk to us about the water control grant first, please?
Sure, yeah, recreation trail support grant. So, um, since the, for the recent progress, recent progress was delayed due to an issue with TMA. And Mayor Smith, you have a lot around this. But basically, the, um, the project side was plugged with a floodway. We had to look into that and submit some documentation and that's now resolved. Which means that now construction is allowed to go forward at that site. Um, our project designs were revised by the engineer and they've been approved back today. And then, we had our first bid opening for construction, I forget, was it, should it be September, I think? And, um, after those bid results, which were well over the allotted grant budget. Uh, we did, the town of Carthage submitted a formal request to TDA for additional grant funds. And we will not know likely until early January, whether we can get additional funding on. Um, the next step for the project will be to then bid out the construction again. The project in the year is recommending that we wait until February or March to do that bidding. Because at that point, we'll know, one, we have the additional grant fund, and two, because of the construction and the asphalt. I think there's something about asphalt plants and closing out during the year. So we recommend that we do the bidding within, so. That is basically the next step, to be to bid out of the construction.
And I think, as you said, part of the confusion was that TMA thought this was in a floodway, but it actually wasn't.
It wasn't, it was a flood plain.
Yes, and that's a difference. And that kind of threw us off time-wise, because we had to send in additional reports that we found out after that. Any questions about that particular grant?
And that contract in December fourteen, twenty twenty five, so.
Uh, the next grant that we applied for is the Blue Cross Playground Grant through Allison, UCDD.
It's the Blue Cross Healthy Place Grant, that's a, that's a program through the Blue Cross, Blue Shield and Tennessee Foundation. Um, this grant submitted, this application was submitted in August third first. Um, Carthage applied for a multifaceted inclusive playground and fitness equipment areas for Carthage City Park, um, or an area near the off the trail. Um, the grant awards will likely be announced in January of twenty twenty one. So we're just kind of waiting on that one. That's a very competitive state-wide program. And in the past, it's only been awarded to big cities like Memphis and Chattanooga. So we are expecting this grant to see some rural areas funded, but we don't know until.
And we had, I think, over twenty letters of support from citizens, which is very, citizens and organizations, that's great.
We had a lot of support.
And then the third grant that we're hoping for is the healthy built environment to, you know, probably help, uh, strengthen, can you talk to us about that?
Yeah, this one through the Department of Health, it's a healthy built environment grant. Um, we submitted a letter of intent for this one, I guess last week, October twenty nine, um, which is basically a pre-application. So the project was for, um, we requested $80,000 to cover a portion of the pool repairs to Carthage City Pool. Um, and then the Department of Health will review those as of ten. We should know in early December, if everybody can hold it on. So it will apply by January, and I think we, the fund is the grant contract, which I might sell around this July. So, probably, I know there's some issues, this is a big issue with the, the swimming pool, so that was, that was what that was.
Right, our, our insurance said that there are repairs that have to be made in the pool for us to keep using it. Unless Derek and, uh, you looked at, I looked at it very closely. So we've got some people who have given several estimates, but this will help toward the repair, toward the cover, if we got toward it to get that. Okay, the, um, there's also, uh, we're hoping, and that's a resolution tonight, that we'll be working on. But there's, TDA has what they call a multi-modal grant. And, um, for some time now, we've been hearing that we would love to have some lighting at the intersection of I-25 and Upper Fair Road. Because fair darkness and coming out of Walmart and trying to turn and sometimes pedestrians are crossing there. So this grant just happened to come along and Mark Dutton at UCDD called us, I think, who better to reply to this? It's a five percent match, which isn't heard of. I think he's, do you have him on the phone, Allison, in case we need?
Yeah, I do, I have him, he'll be here.
Um, that would be right, we, would it be better if we want to have a resolution?
I'm scared of the mouse.
Oh. We have a resolution on, on business coming up about that, let me see. Mark, would you just give us a general overview, then when we get to the resolution, we might have some more questions? Can you hear us okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can you sort of give a thumbnail of what this would cover down there? The grant?
Yes, yes, ma'am, thank you, Mayor Smith. Uh, this is Mark Dutton, Almedelma, RPO Coordinator for this region. Uh, Mayor Smith may already covered this, so I'm sorry if I'm duplicating. But this is for a multi-modal access grant that TDA has in the world of grants that we work in. It's sort of the golden egg, because it only requires a five percent match from the local applicant. So if you get it, and they are competitive, but if you get it, you're talking about a ninety-five percent investment, infrastructure investment in your community. So that's the general. Uh, specifically, what this is, is a pedestrian crosswalk and the signalization that goes along with that. And, uh, and the required lighting, uh, for the crossing where it crosses from Upper Fair Road across State Route twenty-five there, going up towards Walmart. Uh, it's not a complicated project. Uh, Mayor Smith and the engineer who helped, uh, with this, we talked the other day. She, uh, stated that a big citizen concern had to do with, not with the pedestrians crossing there that was dangerous, but the motorists at night could not see them. So we made, made sure to include appropriate lighting in the project. Um, so, just generally, uh, it came in for the total project, just right at $300,000. So that would be asking Carthage for a $16,000 investment, that's five percent. The way these grants work, they are recent reimbursement grants, so if it's awarded, you go through TDA's process of doing the environmental. And, you know, you start with, with the, uh, with that. And at each stage of the process, through the environmental and planning and construction and so forth. Uh, you, you know, you're paying, your contracts to do the work. They present the bill to Carthage. Carthage pays them in full. And then I work with you all to submit the reimbursement paperwork. The usual turnaround is you get, you get ninety-five percent reimbursed within about a month.
Okay. Uh, we're going to actually have a resolution about this in business, but so can we, could we wait any questions when that comes up? Would you hold on for a while with this, do you think? There'll be a few more minutes, okay?
Before we vote on a resolution, shouldn't we be able to ask questions about it? Or we're just going to read the resolution?
No, no, we're going to, then we'll discuss and ask questions. But we have, I have my business. So that, that, that will come up as under new business, I haven't got it here from listening, I think this is one of the first ones. Uh, okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mark, we'll be back to you in just a couple of minutes, hopefully.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, so we go now to grant. Oh, the only other thing I wanted to report on is the, uh, the two state revolving fund loans that we're, uh, have in the process of. One has been applied for and accepted, is that's the water line, TDA's alley water line. They're moving forward with that as far as the engineers. And then I, our project, we're, uh, as we mentioned, for a project that would be one of three in the state if we get it. And it's a fifty, fifty percent principal forgiveness on it. And it would, it would be a study of all of our sewer system and how to approach it in the most economical way to, to replace the, the lines need for the I-N-A. So, um, that's moving forward, we'll do a whole new state, so you know, that was, one of those. Okay, we're going to unfinished business. Uh, first we have a second reading, well, actually, the vote on, we had public hearing on earlier, the ordinance P dash two oh two oh one.
How does Gina, Nancy?
Is he still on the resolution that he's on the phone?
No, 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 that's coming back to business. He's just telling us a little bit about.
This is the flood ordinance.
Yeah, this is the flood ordinance here. So this is the one that we need to cast for TMA to, for our insurance.
And FIP.
And FIP insurance to be guaranteed for our folks here. So do I hear a motion to pass this on second reading?
I have a motion, second.
And he was second, ma'am? Any further discussion about that? If not all in favor of passing a second reading, this ordinance?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, then, uh, the next is, uh, chief, do we, we don't have an invoice, is that what you're saying? The next item is invoice for the fire.
So we'll go to someone if you got a truck, just, I hope to get the truck back tomorrow, but I don't have any invoice yet.
Okay, so we think we have all the repairs that we need on that then, correct?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, okay, I'm glad you asked me. Uh, the third unfinished, uh, business is commercial trash, Councilman Evil?
Okay. Okay, are we coming back to this? Because we were really talking about that, I had to question.
Yes, that was the item in business, he was.
It's going to be in, okay, I won't. All right, so basically, here's what we found in the planning permission is, the planning permission has nothing to do with trash. That is a full-on council decision. We made a decision, basically, we got a, they're not going to get a recommendation, they don't want to get a recommendation, because it's not, it doesn't follow that, it's not from the council. So, pick a location, that's where we're at.
Do you have a motion, you want to make a concern?
Uh, I'm going to leave it up to y'all, I'm going to try to let y'all decide.
I, I have a question, I'm not sure where we are as actually doing this project. I, I know last time we were together, we had a meeting, it was mentioned that we decided to do this project, but I don't remember being at that meeting, maybe on this type of thing. So where are we? Are we just looking into it, are we absolutely doing it? How does the council?
We are one hundred percent doing it. With, the last thing we voted on was to have the planning permission decide where we put the things, where we put the trash location. We have three locations, same, but one location was right there by Third Avenue. The other location was a parking lot out here, the other location was a parking lot down here at City Hall. Those are the three locations.
And can I give the, the Third Avenue was?
That was the one right by the fire hall, that was the one that you had mentioned.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, right by the fire hall. Um, I have a remaining on, on preferences, wherever wants to go. But we voted to say, uh, we'll set up a planning permission, and the planning permission will need to come up with plans. Planning permission found out that's not in, in their jurisdiction, that is the same as any other city council thing, so they're throwing it back up to us. So we're at the point of warbling.
Chief, Mr. Roberts was about to tell me here, but he's out of town. He was the one who we've been looking at, thinking, think there's probably, or something.
I've had several people express displeasure of the idea of putting it near the fire hall.
Okay. So we'll take that on the table.
Near the fire hall? Near the fire hall, in the fire hall beside the building?
We don't need a motion, we can talk right now.
Excuse me, Mr. Moore, you can?
So you can have informal discussion in a small board if you like now. I think what seems appropriate, if someone like has a, wants to make a motion for a particular site, now would be if, if you want to have preliminary informal discussion in a small board, you can do that.
Okay. Since I was here, and I don't remember this vote, I'm old, but I don't think I, I've heard this vote. I have concerns that, that our city government is even doing this when it's going to cost taxpayers. And we're, we're always talking about, we want government to be reduced in the, in the public, in the private sector. And so, maybe it's a little bit late to be saying this. But I was very surprised at the last meeting when it said we're going to do this, because I thought it was still in a planning state. But I really don't think this is an appropriate taxpayer item that we should be doing. I think it's going to cost our taxpayers and our private citizens have to pay for their trash homes, so.
Our, the bridge providing, see?
The bridge, and then if this is someone who wants access to that, then they'll pay a fee. They're not required to pay that fee, it's going to access.
But don't we, do we have to, who pays for it? And who pays for the fence that goes around it and all that? Who has to pay?
The taxpayers pay for it. The taxpayers who are bringing revenue for the city, they pay through it for, through their taxes. And if should they go ahead and decide to have that trash service, they'll pay for the key. But taxpayers, businesses pay for it as well. Now, if we want to build on that fiscal conservative bench, I'm all there for it, but go ahead and apply to everything. Don't just pick and choose on it. I'm going to pay with it. But right now, this has been a vote.
Have we actually had a public, I don't think we actually had a public hearing on picking sides that are talking about the side.
No, we have, we, we want to get, the next thing is to pick a side. I don't know that I'd be able to, do we have to have a public hearing for the side, or do we go for, I don't think we have to, but.
We don't, we don't have to have, assuming again that it's a, it's a town, uh, side.
It's a town.
I would, I would prefer we did have a public hearing, because we don't know how close proximity to other zones.
The two, the two sites, we narrowed it down to the last council meeting, bring it back up, y'all check it out yourselves. We did vote on this, we've already come to conclusion on it, it is a done deal, deal. We have narrowed it down to two sites. Site A is going to be over here at the city parking lot in the corner we were talking about, or somewhere else, but the corner. It had to be within walking distance of places that you could. Site two was going to be in Museum Square parking lot here. Uh, seeing that we're short. Seeing that we're short on parking, I would recommend seeing, we used to have this, before I was on the council, we had commercial trash, where people would put the trash in, a couple trucks we had up here, we're trying to do something a little bit cleaner, a little bit nicer, we're trying to catch up with every other city in the state, and have a commercial trash service for our taxpayers. So that's where I'm at, I'm gonna just go ahead and make a motion, and that way we can vote for it, to put in the city parking lot. Make a, I don't want a second.
Motion second, is there a discussion?
I'm just, to me, I'd like to add to that, that we do have the public for it, because I have yet to hear businesses that are interested in needing that, so I would like to have the public hearing, if we can add that to it.
Do we know who is, are your businesses interested, is anyone, any other?
I have friends by name, so this is not a special pet problem.
Are there other businesses?
We didn't need it.
Well, for the hotel and then the fueling station where I hope, and then any other? It's for future businesses, I mean, I'm gonna sit here and look at how we're basically, we wanna talk about being fiscal conservative, and we're gonna put three hundred thousand dollars in for one single business up here for Walmart, so people across the street, but we're gonna go ahead and ignore all the downtown businesses that have been here for decades, and, okay, but this is a, this is a need that's been happening, I'm still speaking, thank you.
That's not for Walmart.
Okay, I'm still speaking, I'm still speaking.
That is not for Walmart.
I'm still speaking.
This is just that.
Okay, can I finish speaking?
Please go ahead.
Thank you, appreciate it. I'd like to be looking out, I wanna do something to look out for businesses here, help promote growth, take care of other businesses that might need it, and let's do it. We're sitting, we're, we do it for all the residents, why can't we do it for commercial businesses?
I'm just saying, who's asking for it? What businesses need it? I'm not saying it doesn't need to happen.
Talk to your constituents.
They, they know my number, nobody's called and said, we need a trash. I don't know, I'm just a little bit concerned that there's been a.
They called me too.
Is it needed? We have a, my, we have public.
Tell you what, I've gone door to door, I've asked businesses, I recommend you go door to door, start finding businesses as well.
Let's have a public hearing, we can do it right here.
You wanna make a motion to that?
I asked.
Well, what's the?
There's a motion and a second on the floor, this is discussion, a motion, but now, if I may, just briefly, with respect to the planning commission, I do believe that the town, this council chooses a site which it wants to do the improvement, to locate the dumpster or other trash placement facility, that plan does need to be reviewed by planning commission and recommended approval or not, once you get to that point, I thought we were at that point a couple months ago, but we, correction, understandably, but.
Yeah, we were not at that point, we were at the point of choosing a site, but we all referred to the planning commission, we felt the planning commission would do a better job, so choosing the site. Mr. Kinslow found out that it wasn't an honor of the planning commission to do that, but yes, once we choose a site, then it's back out of our hands, it goes to the planning commission, and then after it goes, if it gets approved by the planning commission, you come back, I don't have a problem with a public hearing, let's do a public hearing, but this would be the proper procedure to get there, it's something that we've been kicking the can for almost an entire year now, and I'm gonna get done.
Do you need an amendment on, to put a public hearing?
I don't think, I mean, I think when it came back from the planning commission, then it come up for a vote, and at that time, we should go ahead and vote to say, hey, let's do, let's see if we do a public hearing, I don't think we need that motion for it.
And I do think, to Councilman Knappel's point, I think you'll need how a policy in place at the town, and that will need to be approved by the council, whatever terms that the town has been offering to businesses within the area, that still has to be fleshed out and approved, and I tend to agree, it's certainly better if it's cost neutral to the town, if they reimburse their expenses, at least for the services being provided, not necessarily for reapproval, but again, all that to say, it'll have to come back to you once the site has been approved, and you can have a public hearing at that point.
So Dan, you are the PMP for that?
Again, I think you would just speak something that we would have to look at the cost and then allocate it, and you have to approve the terms.
So I'll make an amendment on my motion, that this be provided, that we have a PMP written out after the planning commission goes to work, there is a policy and procedure in place, before we build anything, as far as how the rules work, everything like that, it's reviewed before the council, and we approve that PMP, and then go from there, and at that time, I think it would be appropriate to have a public hearing, I don't think there's something to make a motion on, I have no issues with a public hearing whatsoever, I just wanna make sure we're doing this, we're sticking to Robert's rules, we're sticking to Robert's rules, we're gonna be fiscal conservative, let's do it all the way around.
So is there any further discussion on this motion and the second, which I, would you believe you read back?
I cannot read that back.
Sorry, I'm gonna repeat, basically, it's the original motion, and we're gonna put the policy and procedure on it, and so that policy and procedure needs to be read to the council after the planning, like, let's say, let's say we pick this site, and this gets approved, okay, then it's gonna go to the planning.
I understood what he said, I fully understood, you made it very simple.
But when it comes back to us, we need to be able to see it with a policy and procedure in hand, not just blanket state, well, it's commercial trash, there needs to be the rules, what's going on, how much it costs, or whatever tiers there are, things like that, needs to have a policy and procedure ready to build, and we vote on the trash being built with the expectations of what's gonna be happening in writing, in a policy and procedure that's down there at City Hall.
So we pretty much voted to find a location, that's.
That's where we are tonight.
Now, I've got a question, if we vote for the parking lot down there to be it, what insurance do we look at the public hearing, and if the public hearing is basically opposed to it, what do we do from there?
So this is just, this motion, as I understand it, and what I would interpret it, is just selecting the site, preparing a plan for the site to submit to the planning commission, this still has to come back before you to approve the construction of the site based upon planning commission, planning commission recommendation or non-recommendation, and then, at that same time, we will approve the policy and procedure for how this will work, go back to the dumpster and things. If none of that passes, it'll just go left, it won't happen.
And this all falls on the plan of Mayor that we talked about almost a couple years ago, is we just find a need before we find an expense, we found a need, found an expense, now y'all wanna hear that need, in fact, I guess it's just you haven't heard it before, and we can have, I'm all for it, because you can hear the need on it, and if the public comes out and they say, we don't want it, we don't want it, vote it out, we don't wanna vote if some public doesn't want, absolutely. And also, the other part is, I'm gonna go and let y'all know, I have trash service, this has nothing to do with me, so you all aren't hurting me and my business or jabbing me politically, if you vote against this trash service, I don't care, I'm just trying to represent the people, and I'm trying to get ahead of things and plan it so we can get a better tax revenue based on savings tax, and being one bite in town for new businesses and take care of old businesses.
So, and just so I'm understanding, so the need would be, first of all, we find out what businesses need this right now, what businesses have their own service, so that would be finding the need, and once we find the need, we can answer some of those questions, is that what you're saying?
It, we're, it's, it's being proactive, not reactive. If we're proactive instead of reactive, maybe we could be proactive on these and broken here, but we're, now, we are, yes, we are being reactive, so we also need to adjust for future growth in this trash service, so people say, oh, they got trash service there, okay, and we wanna make sure that's in there as well.
So can we go ahead then and take a vote on?
We need a vote on the amendment, then we need a vote on the.
So vote on, was there amendment on this?
I think totally, the amendment to his application.
On the second.
Okay, what was the amendment on?
The amendment was to bring back to the council the policy and procedures along with the site.
Okay, so we're vote first on the amendment to bring back the policy and procedures, do I, any further discussion, if not, let's go.
Do I get a second on the amendment? I'm gonna do it.
I'll be, if this is.
Just to be clear, is this taken off the site next to Carter Hardware?
No, no, this is for the, this is for the site that's down here, this is on the city parking lot, on the city parking lot, has nothing to do with Carter Hardware or the fire hall.
Well, Chris, why ask that, you know, if he doesn't have a business in there now, a future business that will come in there, I sure don't want more business with the trash down by next door.
Yeah.
I definitely wouldn't want that. Bring your best, you know, my sister.
So Les, we talked about.
Where would you like to, you think you'd put it on the parking lot down there, you say my parking lot?
Les, I'd like you to put it where you think is the most appropriate place for it, it's your parking lot, but I put it somewhere that's, I mean, let's make it look pretty down there, I mean, if we're gonna have trash, so let's have a nice trash service.
Are you saying that parking lot's pretty full already?
A little better than, though, you look at it, you know, we did well with the parking stuff, we got that, you know, I reckon we might put it down there, I'll do what you want to, you know.
What'd y'all do with them two big trucks of?
Your what?
What'd y'all do with them two big trucks?
Well, we're not gonna park them down there either, we can't.
Well, I'm saying, with that amount of space that y'all had down there before, made it work, will we make it work again?
I don't know, everybody keep claiming good, that was the problem, everybody was throwing grass on the ground, people from parts of the trash that you're throwing in there, you know, not sitting in the old guys.
Yeah, lock and key, nobody throwing trash in there, it's eating their money, can we go with that?
There was discussion.
Throwing it over the fence, well, maybe another way to, I think you're not having one, I think we did.
Now, because I've seen the neighbors down there on the weekends, they, people just bringing trash in down there.
I mean, we keep kicking this, this can go to the next council, and the council after that, eventually, we're, I mean, we're literally one of the last cities in town to have a trash room, and it's been voted on.
Well, okay, I know that people have it twice, but you gotta realize, you know, what we got down there, you know, they're like, parking lot.
Mr. Robinson, I talked with Digger about the space he has against the wall down, down this way, right down here, and I thought he was gonna try to.
So let's get back, we got a motion and amendment on, we got an amendment vote on, we've already gone through all this.
Okay, let's, all in favor of the vote of the amendment to bring back?
Policies.
Okay, we're gonna bring policy and procedures, that's the first amendment, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then the full motion would be to put the park, the trash down here, city parking lot, and bring back the policy and procedures of how that would be voting, would happen. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, let's do, let's do a roll call, vote on that, please, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
No.
Councilwoman Scott?
No.
Councilman Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
No.
Councilman Nurse?
No.
Okay, so, so.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna make another motion then, motion's gonna be, I'm gonna make another, I got the floor right now.
I think the next order of business.
The next order of business, yes.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm still on this, I'm still on this motion, I've got the floor right now, I've got the floor.
Next order of business is River City Ball.
This order of business is not.
It's about the trash, I'm ready to hear it.
It's about the trash, I'm still talking about trash, can you stop interrupting me? Thank you. The next motion I have would be that we put it in the parking lot up here, because that was the last spot that we all talked about, so that's, that's my other option.
Motion is on the floor, don't hesitate.
And if I can finish.
Say second to the motion, please.
Where I, I'll second.
Okay.
Where, sorry.
Yeah, let me finish saying my motion, I apologize. My motion would be that we put it up here, in the parking lot up here.
The museum parking lot?
The, the, the museum parking lot, yes, sir, put in the museum parking lot, it goes to the planning commission, and when it comes back.
You're talking about, excuse me, you're talking about here in the museum, rather than the Carter Hardware?
Right, yes, that's right, the museum parking lot, that is the one I'm speaking about, museum right here, bill we're in, parking lot next to it, and that goes before the planning commission, for a site plan should be approved, and when it comes back from city council approval, it has a policy and procedure behind it.
So what is the next motion?
I'm saying it, I'll start over, would you like to start over?
Please.
Okay. My motion is that we put the trash service in the parking lot at the museum, and should it pass, it goes to the planning commission for a site plan, and when it comes back from the planning commission, there is a policy and procedure on commercial trash usage for that trash, and that way, we can have a public hearing on it, that way, the council has something, whichever council's in here, has something to vote upon, as far as having a policy and procedure of how it's going to be used, that is my motion.
Would you please read the motion?
Councilman Eagle made a motion to place the trash, commercial trash in the parking lot of the museum, or to go before the planning commission for a site plan, and should it be approved, come back before the council with policy and procedures on the trash, the commercial trash service, and have a public hearing.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Have a second, do I have any discussion on that, please?
Is that something that the museum needs to speak on?
Wouldn't be a bad idea.
I would highly encourage that we invite them out to the meeting whenever we approve them.
Any further discussion on that, please? All right, maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
No.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
No.
Councilman Reese?
No.
Three, yes.
I think we need to check with the museum for something that a partner. Any further, anything else about this? Thank you. The next side of the business is River City Ball, permit, and Virginia is here tonight, Melissa's there.
Yeah, hi, Melissa, hey there, I'm from River City Ball, which is a non-profit organization under Smith County Living, Smith County Living is an umbrella of nonprofits that covers things like Santa Shoppers, Deco, food, food trucks, it comes out to help in River City Ball. Last month, this was presented to the city council, and you guys approved the date of April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, for River City Ball, so tonight, we're back to apply for the actual permit for the event, the, the event is Saturday, the eighth twenty-fourth, from seven to eleven P.M., and the, we've closed Main Street, we will be held in front of the courthouse, courthouse grounds, and we'll be closing Main Street from Second Avenue, Third Avenue, around the courthouse from Friday, seven P.M. through Sunday noon, and it's the main, the sole fundraiser for River City Ball, the beneficiary, there's different beneficiary each year, this year, the beneficiary is the annual house, as well as they also provide a scholarship for each of the high schools each year, so we are here today to apply for, to get granted the permit for that event. And I will say, one of the things of this year is we have added additional COVID procedures, so there'll be additional staff, additional cleaning, additional security, masks available, sanitizers on each table, additional signage regarding the COVID procedures.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion that we approve the permit for this, and then we have discussion?
Second.
Motion and second, do we have discussion about that?
I just want you guys to have to turn everything in, the liability insurance, send out all your documents to pay their fees, so you can hear us.
Everything's been checked in. Okay, no discussion, so we'll take the vote, I guess, on that. Let's do our poll.
Vice Mayor Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
I'm staying.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Councilman Reese?
Yes.
So, classic, so, thank you for the thing.
Mayor, I may, before you go to new business, I meant to bring it up with Chief Hyde about the parking lot base, is there any update on that?
I guess he's working on plans for that, or for our next meeting.
For the next meeting, okay. Thank you.
Then, after their approval, we'll start bidding it out.
I'd like to, I'd like to motion to add one new item, new business in regards to boys being locked out, locked into the building, and locked out of the building, like in a second. Second.
That's, that's, that's something that requires a prior couple minutes.
That's something that requires prior couple minutes.
Okay.
You can amend your agenda.
All right, so what?
Um, I'm making a motion to add a new business item to the agenda on the very front end here about, um, employees being locked into the building, not being able to get in the building, uh, keys, something to that effect, now a second.
I'll second.
So, an item of the employees have key, keys to the building, is that what you're saying?
No, you heard what I said and didn't say that. I'll repeat my motion, uh, I'd like to.
Well, it's a agenda item.
Okay. You wanna hear it again?
I'm sorry, I go adding, I.
Adding an agenda item, yes. I'm doing a motion which should be the proper procedure to do so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what did you say, the first of the new business for you?
The beginning of new business, yes.
So, there's a motion to add an item on the agenda, allow employees and keys in buildings, I believe.
Employees are being locked in the building, they, or is, security, they, there's, yes, they're being locked in the building, there's an issue with keys, I'd like to hear from the employees, and I'd like to hear on the new business, it's the first area.
Okay.
Business.
Well, add an item, is it, uh, let's take a vote to add an item to the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, would you like to make a motion, please?
Uh, so, what I've heard is, I'm not making a motion, I'm making a statement, and he's already said that we can do that, so you don't have to interrupt me, thank you. Um, allegedly, we have employees inside of the building down here who, uh, can't get out right now, because they're locked in. And if I'm misquoting that, feel free to correct me, um, I think we have a few employees here tonight to speak to that regards, and I'd like to cede the floor to them.
Can you make a motion about what we're talking about, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think technically to have someone speak, you have to have a motion.
Okay. Um, I'd like to make a motion to have Julie and Cindy speak in that regards.
We can have a motion to allow employees to speak to this issue for discussions, but again, I do think the council needs to approve that.
Absolutely, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to allow employees to speak to an issue of being locked inside the city hall, I, I have a. Let's vote on that, all in favor to.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And, uh, I do want to clarify about this, and I'll, and I don't know what's going on, but that no employees are required or compelled to come forward to talk to this issue at all, it's completely, uh, if anyone wants to speak to this issue, then they can.
Uh, does anyone wish to speak to this issue?
Yeah, that is, uh, last week, new policies.
So, can you?
We're having trouble here, you're in the office.
Last week, policies and procedures were put into place concerning the city hall, uh, doors being locked at certain times, and last Thursday, I believe, was, we have actually walked inside the city hall, like, for about five minutes, because we didn't have anybody to let us out in front of the door.
So.
Do you all have keys?
I'm sorry, did you not call the police to let you out?
They were busy, they weren't on the call.
Okay, we have a key to the front door in, in your office, also.
We were told we were to have access to a key unless it was an emergency.
No, it's, it's there to let you out, or you could have called me, I was there, I would have been glad to.
They know that you stand sacred to be used in an emergency situation.
What, what, what is going on is that we're trying to make a secure building, because we've used quite a bit of money to secure the front of the building, we're trying to secure the back of the building. The police locked it down after everyone has left, and if I'd known you were still there, I would have been glad to let you out.
Do the, do you all have keys to the building?
The interior, our offices, we have access to the vault. The front door was always open twenty-fourth of the COVID, um, after telling the night of lockdown, allow us to have a key to access the building.
Do y'all feel more secure or more trapped?
Trapped.
Okay.
Well, may I clarify this, there are several keys, the, the police have keys, they open it every morning at, at seven o'clock for employees to come in. None of the, none of the public worksmen in the back, the two supervisors have keys, the other employees do not, there's a supervisor's keys in Teresa's office, there's one in, and. Part of what we're trying to do is, is to secure the building and to protect the employees, now, if you don't want to have a security protection.
Are you, are you trying to protect the, the building from the employees themselves, I mean, if they, I mean, my, my employees have keys to my office, every, every.
All my employees have keys to my office.
Even my apartment, I mean.
Okay, but.
I feel like if we trust them enough to deal with the, the books, and handle the money, and the records, and everything else, surely, we can allow, we can trust them enough to open the front door.
I agree.
Well, I mean.
I don't see how it's, it's, to me, we're securing the building from people on the outside. Mayor, something happens if there's a fire, and they're sitting in there trapped, and you have restricted them from having a key to get out.
We have keys all over, they have a key in their department, there's a key, there are two keys, I think.
If we got keys, how long will it let them have them?
They do have one, they're, they're.
Not until the, until the next year, I mean.
But, when they come, when they come in every morning, the, the door is already open, when they come in every morning, the only time that would, that we need a key is if they came in after hours, and then they need to let the police know they're there.
City Attorney Moore, is, I don't know if this would be appropriate or not, you can tell me if it isn't, uh, would it be appropriate for us to go ahead, as a council, vote that our ladies up front have keys, so that they can access safely in and out of there?
You, you could certainly make that motion as a policy of the town, that you, you want employees to have keys to access the building, again, I, you know, because of the way the charge is written, the question is whether the mayor has that authority, and she's in charge of the day-to-day operation of the town, but you can certainly say your preference as a policy, as to how you think that should be.
Would we need to have a resolution, or how would that, how would that, hey?
Let, they.
Hey, I'm not, I'm asking.
Let the city employees just speak, we have the courage.
Yes. Julie?
I just wanted to wait on her. Um, we were also given a sheet of paper, uh, it was last week, that stated at four o'clock, we are not to go out the back, so you don't have access there, we're not allowed to go out back, and we also had to wait for someone from the police department to let us out the door.
Where is that number?
Um, it was given to me by my supervisor, Lou Camp, the mayor. And, um, I mean, we have to go out, even though our office closes at four, that doesn't mean that we get to go home right that second, I mean, we can have work orders, then we have last minute, people calling him, we need to get out of the door, in order for public works to get looking for those first people in the morning. We were told we are not allowed out the back door at four, and we have to wait for someone, uh, the police department to let us out. And the day that city was actually speaking about, um, there was no policeman in the area, and the dispatcher was on call. We can't wait for someone, I mean, if I had to get somewhere, I was stuck, I couldn't get out. Um, she's talking about the key that she gave Teresa, yes, she gave Teresa some key, she actually told her to make a copy of it to us, and she retracted that, and she said, no, for her to keep it and put it in place, then you just call this for emergencies. Well, I mean, me getting out the building is not an emergency, what if we were in that same situation, and then we're fired? I mean, how am I gonna get out, when I have orders, I'm not to leave the building, so someone else lets me out.
Well, I, just to clarify, and whatever, in the back, the only two people who have the keys are the two supervisors, they open and come in. What we're trying to do is to create a safe situation there, so when it's locked up, I have even asked, Les, I would ask y'all, when you leave, and you have to be out during the day, please lock the bays, please lock the back doors. That's the vulnerable place, I mean, I don't wanna talk too much about it, because then people will know, but we have some vulnerabilities in our building if someone wanted to do harm, so we're trying to secure those vulnerable spots in our building. Up front, we've got a key, and, and the main off, in the, uh, this office, we have the, uh, I mean, I don't know that there's a problem, if there's a problem with the police, there's a dispatcher there all the time, I'm there probably till five thirty-six every day, I can let them out if they need out.
Mayor, you stated this is a problem, there's nothing you can write to argue.
Well, then, let me ask you, are we gonna be consistent and give keys to every single employee in the building, and how does that, does that protect or not protect the rest of the employees and everybody? I mean, the only.
Why are we hiring people we don't trust to have a key?
Well, they're originally locked to keep people from, from the outside coming in, and not from the inside leaving, and right now, the inside people can't leave.
Julie's had a statement.
I'm sorry, can you speak? Um, every policeman, dispatcher, part-time dispatcher, has access to their office via this door. Uh, part-time dispatchers have access to the back. The full-time office employees have no access. Um, she spoke that the doors are always open, no, it's not, I got there one, one day last week, we were for lunch, the front door was locked. I didn't bother the police, it's not their responsibility to monitor the door. I walked around, that was before we were given these orders, we can now, can't be in the back anymore, unless it's driven out. So, I walked around, maybe, let's only fix that early, I walked in that way, because I'm not, it's not the police's responsibility to monitor the door. So, that's just.
Well, I, if, if you wanna make it consistent, well, we've given keys to every employee, to the building, and, and we can have those made, but please know, we're trying to secure our building as much as possible, especially right now, because, uh.
Yeah, I mean, I.
We know that our building, our building is broken in by a man late at night, and.
Well, him not having a key didn't affect it at all.
I don't, I don't see, I don't see a problem with him having a key, as long as he has a key, you know, that's, you know, you don't want a bunch of keys on.
Yeah, but some do not duplicate keys on it, too.
Well, that's what we are right now. So, Les and Derek, are you okay with everybody having keys back there to get in, to your area? Well, you, you've got some valuable stuff back there, and keys get lost. Keys get lost, no, they're, no, we.
So, you're not asking for a key to the back door? You're not asking for a key to the back door?
Well.
Just to get you to be able to get into there, I'm.
But I guess I'm saying.
Which key, which keys are you all specifically asking for?
The front door.
The front door, okay, so we make it simple at this point, just, I, I don't think we need any motion, we just logically give two adult people who we trust with everything in our city, keys.
We're glad to give keys, and we're glad to do that.
Fair.
Uh, please, again, just know, we're trying to secure our building in every direction we se, we can secure it, um, that's all this is about.
Will you let us know if you do not get a key by the end of the week, or, what, what, when can they have a key by?
We can get a key tomorrow.
Right, just let us know by Monday if you don't have a key. Thank you.
I know some keys, you can't, you can't.
Yeah, if you do not do that, yes, that's.
What we've, what we've been doing is, every key that we have, each person has one unique key, that's a number that they're signed to, for the building, so we'll do the same thing for this, we'll make unique keys for the front door. Okay, thank you, uh, there's the next item of business is, uh, C B D G grant. We have to, we have to make a motion about where we would, we would want to go with the fire engine again to apply, apply for that this year, or something else, do I have a motion, one way or the other?
I'd like to motion to go with the fire engine again this year, second.
Okay. A motion is second, any discussion about that? Okay, all in favor of applying for the, using the C B D G application for the fire engine again? All in favor, please, I'm sorry. I think Sam, Sam, are you voting aye on that one, too?
Kind of like that new London.
We're, we're voting, uh, for the C B D G grant of, uh, to use in the fire engine, or apply for, for the fire engine, so all in favor, please, now it sounds bad. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, any, any opposed? Okay, that's, we'll move forward with that, uh, whoever's here, okay, thank you, um, now we get to the, the T D, uh, excuse me, T dot grant to light, uh, that area, that's crosswalk, that a lot of pedestrians are using right now. Uh, and also, a lot of the motorists are saying they don't have enough light there to get in and out of that intersection, so, that's something they've been saying for years, so, I would need a motion to, uh, allow us to apply for that grant, and the resolution, if we see here's, uh.
I'll, I'll motion for it, I do wanna ask him some questions.
Okay, so, the motion is to apply for this grant, to allow us to apply for it, uh, now, you're second to that?
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Uh, we're gonna have discussion on this, yeah.
Let's ask more discussion.
Kicking a can down those, I, I've got a question for you, sir, it's, uh, Mark?
Yes.
Can you hear me, okay, this is Councilman Ebel, on this grant, does this only apply to T dot, um, T dot control roads such as Highway twenty-five, or can it apply to anything within the city?
Now, uh, the criteria for the multimodal access is, they want it to be on or very close to a state route, and so, that's their official criteria, but even, the, the sort of unwritten is that they, they, they prefer to be, you know, all completely along a state route, which of course, this one is, it's a, it's a small crosswalk project, it's right there, and, uh, on twenty-five between Upper Bay and Wal-Martier.
So, let me give you two other hypothetical scenarios on this, should, um, we've got one area near a park, that, um, is kind of, that could use some lighting and crosswalks and everything like that, but it is not, I would say it's probably, what, about a quarter mile off of Highway twenty-five?
About there.
Okay, that's one area, would that, would that hurt this grant, if we did something like that?
I'm sorry, did you say it wouldn't hurt this grant?
Well, would it be eligible, I apologize?
Would be very likely to, yeah.
Uh, well, I would, I would want to, I would want to, you know, get some more detailed information about exactly where it is, I will take, like I said, I think in the criteria, they say it can be a quarter mile away from, but they want the majority of it, you know, on a state route. I'll give you an example, I'm, I'm about to do a call like this with Hartsfield, uh, there's this side farm project on one forty-one, and Broadway right there in downtown, so, just the, the more that it's right on a state route, right along a state route, the more six, the more likely of a success it's gonna have.
Okay, thank, that's all the questions I had on that, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, do we have a motion to allow us to go ahead and apply for this, and I think the deadline is tomorrow, is that Mark, right, Mark?
Yes, ma'am, they pushed it to Monday, just because, uh, they haven't closed with their system, but we're, we're on track to acquire.
We already have a motion, second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion, second?
Yeah.
To apply for this, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor to.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Mark, we appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So, we'll talk tomorrow about getting that application in.
That's something we do need to look at, something.
Yeah, that's, that's where it's at.
That, that's one, and then Main Street crosswalks as well, those are two areas, heavily need those, because those are traveled by children, and anything else in the city, so, just something to look at down the road.
Yeah, she, she's a waitress.
Okay, we have a budget amendment for the, uh, park, uh, Teresa, we're gonna get a seat vote, could you tell us about that, please?
Yes, uh, very good community project started, uh, to rebuild the city boat that was falling down, uh, through all Main Street, and the park, and, uh, the funds that been collected for that have been donated to the city, but the city might have to write the checks now, so, this is just to amend the budget, because this was not originally part of the budget, so we didn't know it probably would occur, and we are very grateful that you did. But, um, I think the last estimate we covered was thirty-seven hundred dollars, and that is my percentage of everything. Uh, I do not have, um, hold, but we're gonna ask for a budget of five thousand dollars, which will cover, should cover any additional, and hopefully, we won't have to come back and ask for a hundred fifty million, uh, but that's what they.
Motion to. Okay.
Motion, I'll say it, I'll say it.
Sam, make a motion to, for the budget amendments. Awesome, woman, second, seconds, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Then we have, uh, is Chief Davis still here? Maybe he stepped outside, have you seen, oh, there he is, okay.
Chief Davis.
Chief Davis, or the, uh, Gulf State Dist第三个, I think you said those are tasers.
So, I got a few tasers that are old, some of them have been malfunctioning, I've got money in my drip fund to replace those, and I think, y'all have the exact quote, I think I have the. Send it to y'all, I've got money in my drip fund to purchase those and replace those, and it's more than. and it's more than I was to say at this point in time. I'm asking y'all to commission me to go get and purchase that.
A motion to approve our purchase. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve, any discussion on that? If not, all in favor of approving for this?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys, appreciate it.
Okay. The next item is the Christmas special event. Actually, Mr. Werder called today and said, Mr. Werder, he said, they wouldn't actually be asking for the permit because they're going to keep it all on the courthouse lawn, so we don't have to worry about that, that, so... Then, we have, did you have some other questions about the parades, Councilman?
Yes, I do, since I got on the agenda to talk about it. And I looked up, I looked this up, there was a little bit of anxiety that happened after the last vote for the Halloween deal. Veterans Day Parade is a very important parade. It's one thing that I, veterans are a big thing for me, and for American Legion, and it was kind of left up in the air. And I had asked the city, and I had to find out about it on Facebook, that we were actually having a parade. So, but parades do not fall under the council, they do not fall under the mayor, they fall under the city recorder. So, that's for parades, and it does say on section three, however, this ordinance shall not affect any special event approved or applied prior to this effective date. And I'm going to take into account that includes our two parades, the Veterans Day Parade and the Christmas Parade. So, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with that, that we don't have to, we don't approve these at all. These happen, they just go automatically there.
Okay, just to clarify that, it does have to come through, because, just so you will know, the American Legion, back in February, got this approval for this parade. I'm sorry, you didn't know about that, but they...
I asked, I asked about it, and nobody told me.
So, Mr. Fred Keith got it, and then Mr. Bruce Werder.
Okay. Mr. Fred Keith no longer with us, which is why this parade is very much important to us. And so, I've known...
This has been in the court for two weeks, that would have happened. I'm sorry you didn't know about it, but that's...
No, I know about the parade, we didn't know what was going on. I know everything about the parade, Mayor. What I'm asking is that we not play, if there's one place that we cannot play politics with, can we leave veterans out of politics and drop it off the door there?
Sure, we're not playing politics, I've been working with these people, they help them all.
Okay, so, do me a favor, just, if I, if I ask about a parade, just get back to me, that's all I'm asking, because I was asking on behalf of the American Legion.
Sorry, I didn't, when did you ask, I'm sorry.
I asked about it last week, I found about it on Facebook.
Did you call me and ask me about this?
No, every time I've ever called you, you've called me back.
How did you ask, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't... But anyway, this, this has been in the works since February, and the veterans all knew about it, I thought, and it's been in the paper.
We were very, we were very, and that being said, we were all very afraid that something would happen to the parade. We had, okay, so...
Well, this was approved in February.
All right.
So...
If we can have a clear opinion on that, and I just want the council to know that parades go through the city recorder, they go through us, they don't go through the American Legion.
Okay, so that both parades are going forward. No problem with either one, they're going forward, so, thank you. All right, the next item is, is ethics, something violation for sunshine law?
Yes, I want to ask for one minute on this, and then y'all make a decision. My motion is going to be to investigate an ethics violation. There was an email sent out to four members of the council, disregarding two members of the council, to collude in what I don't know, but it was sent by Mayor Smith, and that is the sunshine law violation, clear and simple. It's documented, because it was an email. And my wife gets dragged into this. My wife was not appointed to anything. My wife volunteered her time to help some kids out, had nothing to do with this event. Then again, this is purely political attack against me, and I don't really appreciate it. It's unprofessional, it's demeaning, and if you have an issue with me, we can talk about it like adults in front of each other in a meeting that doesn't violate the sunshine laws if we don't go around to councilpeople's backs and send an email off about it. So, I don't know what else got talked about, but this was inappropriate, and this is an ethics violation right there. Now, so, I'm on a motion that we investigate, this is an ethics violation, and there's my motion.
Mr. Moore, did you take a...
Just wait for a second.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, and there's a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, then we have some discussion, Mr. Moore? What is...
Do you have a question, I'm glad to answer.
Yes, specifically, are emails covered under our ethics violation laws?
So, emails aren't referenced in ethics violation in the ethics ordinance, and as we discussed, and discussed with the council, which are times, you know, sunshine law does prohibit conducting public business on items that should be covered for the board via email. It doesn't prohibit providing information. I didn't go back to review the email that you said, because it's kind of been that gray zone of maybe making that suggestion. I did not realize that the entire council was not coming on that originally. But I don't think that it's specifically covered under the code that, that is policy as the council votes to do it on a thorough investigation, of course we'll do it, but that's my initial opinion based on quick review of the email, ethics policy.
And why did you not include myself, Councilman Watts? I'm asking you a question, why did you not include...
You are, you look, I said initial, and I came back with later, and your argument, you don't get that.
You got your hand caught in cookie jars, what happened? Yes. You got caught, and then you got called out, and I don't care what the council did.
Then, then this comes later.
This came later, and I conveyed it all, so, let me ask you again, why did you do that?
Well, initially, this was sent out because there was a Facebook post that in spite of what the council had voted, you and your wife were suggesting everyone come out and do what they had voted against. And I sent an email saying, how do you want to handle this? It was because it was coming up in just a few days.
We live in a free country, people can do what they want to do, what they want to do, how they want to do it, and that's fine, and the fact that you were so focused on a Facebook post...
Excuse me, I was thinking, would you stop, please, and let me finish, just like you asked me.
I apologize, let's wrap this up about three minutes.
Yeah.
I need to leave, so you guys have to attend.
Well, let's make a vote, one way or the other, Mark, before you leave, if you don't mind.
I'm just not going to listen to our opinions here anymore, I'm just going to...
I know, it's, it's...
This is not what we're here to do.
No, it's not.
No, I agree, I'm not here to be an ethical, send an ethical email, so that's my motion, there's a second, we can go ahead and make a vote on it.
Any further discussion? Do we have a vote, please, for a call vote, or whatever?
Ms. Murrell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hattler?
No.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Councilman Reese?
It's time.
So, just so I understand, even though Mr. Moore is saying this is not...
I'll review, basically, I understand, and I'll review the emails that were sent out and the light of the message, I'm going to report that right now.
That sounds good, thank you very much.
Motion under, it's fair.